...legislation. I think we're best moving those to the end because they involve negotiations and perhaps are executive in nature at this point in time. So we'll push those to the end. Let's go right to the first discussion that President Warner had on here, and that was repair work at the Eastport Dock. Jessica, do you want to come up and give us some information on this? Good afternoon, Jess.
Jessica.
So, I just printed out the Eastport Dock layout, and it's come to my attention that I think we're going to have to relocate some of these people because the damage is so bad at Eastport Dock. I briefly spoke with Ed and Rich both about this, and there's four slips that are on the pier, and there's three people that I've assigned permits to already. So we're going to have to do some moving around.
Can I see that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, we can't have safety issues. I mean, obviously, we are combating a deteriorating infrastructure. We're playing a lot of catch-up here. You know, we have a couple of projects in the works between Bay Avenue and Bay Crest. You know, these things haven't been worked on or rehabilitated in decades, and that's what we're working on trying to nail. So whatever we have to do to facilitate this, obviously, we don't want to have unsafe conditions. You know, we don't put anybody in that position. So we're going to have to figure out, and I think we're going to have to figure out, again, another cost structure for repairing this facility.
But there's spots for them to be reassigned.
There are right now, yes. So I've received a couple of complaints from people about the damage. And then I've also been, I've been receiving a lot of phone calls from people who actually want to get slips there as well. And I tell people all the time, you know, it's a first-come, first-served basis. This was before, I told like three people last week that there was still availability there. Unfortunately, I don't have their names or phone numbers, so I can't call them and say, oh, you know, we have to reassign people now because of the damage. So I'll just tell people when they come in, you know, unfortunately, we might have to start up a wait list again for the area.
Right. Well, let's get everybody reassigned and tightened up as quickly as possible. Let's assess what we need to assess, and then let's figure out what the, you know, what the plan is moving forward on getting this facility back up to, you know, proper standards. And then we'll have to just take a look at the finances.
Have people already been reassigned to their slips?
No, that was my next question. Do you want me to do that ASAP? Call people and get them reassigned?
Yeah, I would reassign them, especially if they have permits and they've paid for them.
Yes.
One guy had his boat in the water, too.
And it's May 1st, so boats are going in the water, right?
I think April 15th was the start.
Yeah.
When I got the...
Let's get people reassigned.
Okay.
When I got the email from Bay Constable Franks, I took pictures and I passed them around. But when I spoke with President Warner, I said, is there a way to patch it? And he said, mm-mm. So we have to reassign.
How do they, do you know how they have it closed off?
There's a yellow caution tape across it.
Okay. We got to put something of substance there because just by chance, that tape blows away in the wind, and somebody walks out there and gets hurt, we're going to get sued. So, you know, maybe closed.
I'm in agreement.
Maybe a chain, maybe a cement curbing, anything that's more permanent, that can't be moved.
Absolutely. Let's send Rich down there.
They may want, you know, substantive signs made up that get off of those ropes or chains, saying that, you know, by order of the trustees, the, this is portion of the dock is closed off to the public, you know.
So we didn't know about this come fall, we could have had this in motion.
Yeah, let's get a plan together. We'll get a plan together to get the rehab going on here. Pretty, you know, one, one project at a time. We've been trying to work it out with the debt service and the bonding to be able to fix these things so everybody can enjoy them.
Yeah.
Just add this to the list.
I think from a safety and liability thing, though, we should have it very well closed off.
Absolutely.
No, that no access is allowed on that.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
All right. As far as fixing it, I know it's a process. But is a proposal, is that what happens? First, we contact the engineering firm that did the work for...
Well, let's take a look exactly what it is.
Make sure we have permits for it. I think, actually, I think Matt originally did the permits for this. Eastport Dock.
Let's, let's, we'll pull the file out, take a look and see who did it.
Okay.
We'll take a look at it, see where we're at on the permit, end of it, and then we'll, we'll follow the procedure from them, putting together a bid spec, if we have the permits, and then going out, taking a look at how we can work out the bonding, so on and so forth, the same way we did with the other stuff. We do have some of this stuff in the works. Maybe something's got a jump priority here. But let's get it safe first, and then let's formulate a strategy to, to get it repaired on the financial side.
Okay.
And get everybody back to being able to enjoy access to the waterway.
I'm just looking at these numbers right now and the max vessel size. I'm not sure that some of these slips are going to be able to fit one of these people. But I'll talk to Rich and see what we can do, and then I'll let you guys know if there's any issues.
Yeah. Whatever adjustments we have to make, we may have to move people to some other facility. And if we can't accommodate it, we can't accommodate it because we can't have anybody in an unsafe situation.
Right, right. Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have on is a discussion that President Warner had for general permit conditions language. Want to speak to that, James? James Dier, environmental analyst?
Yes. So, right now, currently, on our permits, we hide the general conditions that are in the Blue Book behind the permit page itself. It's on a list of them. Obviously, notice that, you know, we change our general permit conditions through the Blue Book regularly, especially with other permits in our office. With other permits, we took them off, all the permits, and Jess couldn't speak to that because it changes so often that, you know, they change that. So I want to just see what you guys want to do, if you want to just keep updating them and having them on the permits, or if you want to take it, take it out completely. We do, you know, we note, we, within the permit, we say, you know, they have to abide by the, you know, the rules and regulations for the management of products that waters in town of Southampton. So it kind of covers that, you know, overall picture of the, you have to adhere to the management, the, you know, rules and regulations.
Look.
So, you know.
What do you think from a legal consistency standpoint?
So James and I discussed this a couple of weeks ago when he brought it up to me. And I think that it is something the trustees have always done historically, is print a copy of, of the relevant Blue Book portion on the back of the permit. There's no legal reason to do this, since the permit refers to the relevant sections of the Blue Book, but it is sort of custom in the trustees and from a historic purpose. I've seen the value in it being there to determine what the Blue Book regulations were at a certain snapshot in time. With the advent of sort of modern code and record-keeping, we know what our Blue Book looked like in snapshots in time. So I think that if the trustees decide that they want to keep having the Blue Book regulations printed on the back of these permits, they need to reflect whatever the current version is of the Blue Book. But there is no legal requirement that that happens. And, and at this point in time, we have enough records, and we can always trace back what the Blue Book stated at the time a permit was issued and while it was valid. So, you know, while, while some of the, you know, rules and regulations that were in place in the 70s or the 60s, this might be our only historic document, there's, that need doesn't really exist anymore.
Bill?
I'd like to have it updated, so put it printed on the back. But it's been, that's how they've been doing for the last hundred years.
Maintain the consistency with the updated version.
Yeah.
And what do you think?
I'm okay with, I'll follow along on this situation with whatever you guys think. I'm okay with carrying on with tradition, but I understand your point.
Bruce?
Updated. It'd be easy for everybody.
Okay.
So update it and keep the tradition.
I think that's what the consensus seems, you know. I mean, obviously, this is a work session, so there's still time for thinking about it.
The one thing that I just want to mention, and I don't, I don't mind either way.
So James, can we fit that, we can't fit it all on one page anymore, right?
Um, so currently, it's just permits required section with dredging and looks like bulkhead.
So how about...
But it doesn't include like catwalks or docks or floating docks. Doesn't include all of it.
So you think it's going to be a bigger...
So it's, well, I mean, if we want to include it all, which we probably should if it's a general, if it's a general permit and it covers that section, then it should cover all of it. But, you know, it's up to you guys whether you want to put it all or just keep this.
Could you abbreviate, like, in the floating dock parts, you know, say part of, then abbreviate and pay the, put the page number in the Blue Book to go look, reference to?
I wouldn't necessarily recommend, I mean, we could just reference the sections of the Blue Book that are relevant, or article this, article that. But I wouldn't want to abbreviate any printed form of the statute. I think that, you know, or the regulation itself, I would want it to be, if we're going to have it on the back, have the whole thing. James and I can always look and see, right, because right now, we just have the docks, the dredging, bulkhead, right, because that's under one single article.
Right.
But catwalks are on a different article. So maybe what we can do is go through the Blue Book and identify the relevant sections that pertain to structures permitted under the general permit, and then...
Add it all to one.
Add it all in.
And then we'll see, maybe we'll come back and show, you know, this is the amount that we're going to have to put on the back. Are you guys still...
Yeah, let's do that. And then if it's, if it's going to waste a ton of paper, then perhaps, you know.
Well, if you abbreviate it, the homeowner or the person with that app, they're going to have to go to another section to look it up. They're not going to do that.
Well, here's the thing, the front of the permit says, you know, that they have to comply with...
Right.
The Blue Book. So there's no need to reprint the Blue Book on the back. Like I said, it's, it's been custom and practice of the trustees, but that was also a time when the Blue Book was much shorter. So...
Not as easily accessible either.
So I, I think that James and I can identify the relevant sections, see if we can make it aesthetically pleasing and legible, and we don't have to do it in two-point font. And if we can maintain that tradition of the trustees, we'll let you know. And if we can't, then we'll come back to the drawing board.
It's good to maintain tradition. I think it's good for a handy, you know, in the field, the guys that are working in the field to be able to refer to something that's right there instead of having to search. I mean, they could obviously go on the phone and find whatever.
We might even put a disclaimer that, you know, it's incumbent upon the permutee to, you know, review...
Right.
The official copy of the Blue Book at all times.
Updates.
Yeah.
Correctively, yeah.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right, we go with that topic?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next we have is a dimensional fee calculation for boathouses and other structures that, you know, otherwise have been listed. And I know that Martha had some thoughts on that as well.
Yes. Well, so James brought this to my attention because the trustees recently approved an application in which a boathouse was being rebuilt. And the common practice of the trustees is that once an application has been approved, the fees for that permit, i.e. the dimensional, you know, regulations or the dimensional fees, are based on what was approved, and they're paid by the applicant upon release of the permit. So this particular applicant, James realized that he had no guidance from the fee schedule to calculate the dimensional fees for this particular application, which the trustees approved. The fee schedule doesn't have any mention of boathouses or other structures. There are docks, but docks are generally of a certain width. The boathouse is a different dimensional regulation. I, so I sent an email to everyone who was just to you. It was an email to everyone where I thought perhaps a good starting point was perhaps to use the per-square-foot, use a per-square-foot fee, and then perhaps a fee for the pilings required to hold up that structure. And that way, if we have a per-square-foot fee, then that would cover sort of any miscellaneous other structures. There aren't a ton of boathouses that the trustees do, but every once in a while, there is something random and weird that is more than just a dock or a bulkhead or a catwalk.
That'll catch it.
That should catch it. But it's up to this board to set what that fee would be and figure out, you know, do you need to do it on, on the pilings? I, I don't think there should be a double charge if the pilings were included as part of the dock structure. You know, we should, I don't think that would be fair.
How does the, let me ask you a question. How's the building department do, they put a house on poles?
I don't know.
You might want to check in, we're checking it out.
Yeah.
To see if they charge for the building, for the poles, what the building sits on?
My, my thinking, and we'd have to discuss it with the building department to confirm, but the building department tends to do things on square footage. The difference between the trustees and the building department is part of the fee that's being calculated is the right to place a structure on trustee-owned land.
We have a young lady who has the answer.
I have to ask that. The houses are based on square...
You got to come up.
You have to come up to the... Just state your name for the record, Agina.
Agina Rigdon, DKR4, thank you.
We have experience in this.
The houses are based on square footage, but accessory structures are based, we give them the square footage as a courtesy, but it's basically based on estimated cost. So...
The trustees, however, your fees are calculated, again, based on what's being placed on the trustee-owned bottom lands.
Right.
So like I said, there's square footage, and then there's also, currently, the way you do docks, you charge a per-piling fee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Agina. So that's, that's a decision up to the trustees on how they'd like to deal with these structures. Again, it's a, you'll only see a handful of them.
How many boathouses we do?
This is the first one I've seen since I've...
Probably a good idea to, the way she's talking about it, so it'll catch other type of structures. There's been some of them where they've had these little cabana things that were pre-existing and whatever. So you're going to want to catch that somehow.
A lot of, a lot of the times, we're dealing with structures that are, you know, pre-existent, non-conforming, that go back, I mean, I'm thinking of that one yacht club in Quogue, right, where their, their main boathouse is sort of at the road end and, you know, so it, again, it's...
The trustee's property.
Partially, yes.
The trustees, partially. And then we had another one, a little thing on, in Quogue also, another little thing that we had like four years ago. It happens, so...
It happens. So if we had a fee schedule that at least contemplates it, then we won't have this lag time between the approval of an application and the release of the permit, simply because, you know, the office needs guidance on how to calculate the fees for the permit.
All right. So let's, let's take a look at what the building department charges are, and see how they would fit in, and find out what makes sense, and then we'll perhaps get a resolution going.
Yeah, I mean, if we, I, I would like, and I'm sure the applicant in this particular case would like it, and we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday. So if we could set some sort of fee or get some guidance by Friday, with the trustees' agreement, then I can, you know, we can draft up a resolution and have it go before a vote of the board on Monday.
Start with Bill's suggestion and kind of what Agina was talking about, and take a look at what the numbers are.
Yeah, compared to how the building department does it.
Especially if we could look at any houses that have been raised, so they're on pilings.
Well, but again, Agina brought up a very good point, that houses are a principal structure.
It is accessory.
Which is an accessory structure. So I really don't know how, how much, what the building department charges on a square-foot basis for a principal structure will be analogous.
Okay.
But we can certainly find out what that number is and get it to the trustees.
Because we would have to go by accessory structure.
Right.
I mean, you're not beholden to what the building department is.
No, but we want, we want to try to stay in line.
It would be some kind of a guide to kind of see what it looks like, where it's at, that we, you know, we're in the ballpark somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way docks are done right now, they're done by square foot, right?
They're done by...
Or linear foot.
Linear foot.
They're done by linear foot.
Time, well.
Five dollars for linear foot, I think, is the current fee schedule.
Pilings are for the floating dock.
Oh, interesting. Okay, so I didn't know that pilings were for floating docks.
Different.
So...
We'll look.
All right, we'll look. And then hopefully, you know, is there any trustee that wants to take sort of the lead on this so that I can communicate it to everyone, in the hopes that we can get a resolution on it for Monday?
Send it to me.
All right.
Give it to Ann.
Scott and Ann.
Yeah.
Will be my two point people. All right.
Well, it's just Ed's not here, so I got this role, so if you want to do the back-and-forth with the building department, that would be great.
Well, if you're a sincere treasurer, it'd probably be smart to keep you in the lead.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just...
Ann.
Just let me know. Just let me know anyway. Because I, yeah, exactly.
Yes, yes. Noel, Rachel.
Okay.
Okay. The next on the agenda, we have a disposition sign-off for archiving of files.
Yes, that is my topic. I, I have passed out to each board member the list, which was previously discussed with Town Clerk Sunday Shermyer. I've done an exhaustive search through the prior accounting program, QuickBooks, to any links with capital projects which would extend the life of these files. And there is nothing that would, there is no barrier to start the disposal of these files. So if you could just each initial the copy, and we're working closely with Sunday Shermyer's office, as well as the records management staff, and they can begin the disposal process of these files, which have long exhausted any retention schedule. But this does not include what's already here in the building, which is another 100 boxes that would be of, you know, it's a different, they have a, a different retention schedule would be held on to for a while. But the ones on this list are ready to be disposed of. So that's up to the board. But we have, through prior accounting systems, spoken with my predecessor, we've gone through each and every capital project. There's nothing in these files that's connected in any way to any of those projects, and they can be disposed of, according to the MU1 schedule.
Okay.
Great job, Lisa.
Thanks.
Thank you. I didn't do it alone, but thank you.
Yeah, I know. It's a great project.
Yes.
You've got a charge, Lisa.
Pass it, pass it down to her.
Yeah, thank you.
You want it now?
Appreciate that. And Uncle Bob's is officially closed, and so we're no longer paying a monthly rental, actually, an annual fee, which, which doubled May 1st. So that's no longer happening. So...
Okay.
Thanks, Martha.
Okay. Just in the interest of time, do you want to move the, do you want to move the waterfowl up ahead of the permits?
Yes.
Is that okay with the board to move up the waterfowl hunting locations permit issue that's on the back page up to this point in time?
Um, so Bay Constable Rich Franks sent out an NOV. Bill, do you mind if I just see that file? I'm sorry. That top one. Thank you so much.
Do you have it?
Sorry. Bay Constable Rich Franks sent out an NOV to William Becker back on April 15th, and gave him 10 days to correct, to take corrective action, which I have not heard from him. So just following pursuit with how we dealt with all the other ones, this should go on as long as you guys are okay with it for revocation. That's how we dealt with all the other ones that did not have...
Make sure whatever we do is by the book.
Yes. That's, this is how, what we did for all the other ones. So I just wanted to discuss it here with you guys and see what you want to do.
I think that Martha wants to be recused from this, and that Jim should take this matter.
Sure. I mean, it's, it's, I think at this point, it's just a resolution going before the board.
Yeah.
But the town attorney is working on resolving any other issues...
Yes.
That may exist with Mr. Becker. But this is...
I mean, even for this, I think Jim should take care of it, you know, instead of takes you out of the mix, out of the mix.
All right. This is just a resolution before the board, so I don't know how appropriate it would be for the town attorney to...
That's your call. I just don't want to put you in an awkward position.
No, no, no. The office staff prepares the resolution, and, you know, I don't, I don't have any conflict of interest...
Okay. No, just threats.
In this situation, just, just threats.
Because my question...
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Lisa. My question was just going to be, we haven't heard from Mr. Becker nor his attorney. No one has, right?
And the letters have come back.
Well...
Okay. And the letters have come back.
The letter went through to Becker, but not Thomas Horn, the certified mailing for, from the resolution, the determination on the appeal came back from Horn.
Right. But I, I think that, though, there was a, a meeting between the, the town attorney and Mr. Becker, Mr. Pell, myself.
But those are all germane to issues on Davis Creek outside of this particular permit.
Okay. So as long as you guys are all okay with it, Lisa and I will prepare the resolution to revoke this?
And we'll have to have a consultation with the town attorney as well.
Okay. So before we do the resolution...
Well, you can put a resolution on, but between now and then, I think we're going to have to have a consultation.
Yeah, he just has to look over it.
Okay.
We want to make sure it's, that all the Ts are...
Because he was involved, he was involved in it, and I think it's important that we consult with him prior to taking any action. It certainly can move forward for discussion for Monday, and perhaps some type of a, of a disposition. But I think in the interest of fairness, I think we need to consult. Mr. Burke, what do you think, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
So should I, should we prepare the resolution and draft the resolution?
No, we'll prepare the resolution, and we'll put it on. The board can either vote to adopt it, defeat it, table it.
Okay.
The same as we've done in the past.
Yeah.
We've made decisions right at that point in time. People have come and made appeals.
Okay.
We've made decisions pro or, or con. But I think relative to this, we're going to have to consult with, with Mr. Burke.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Since we're going to move those other two discussions to the end, I think we can jump into the permit applications. Is that okay? I'm going to do Ed's.
We have 64 West Way. We have something called Watergate. This is a renewal.
Yes, renewal.
I don't believe there's any, any changes to this. It's permit BLK00122, tax map 473689233. What is this for, James? This is 182 feet of deteriorating timber bulkhead reconstruction of 170 feet of new vinyl bulkhead, four to seven feet landward of the existing bulkhead.
Sorry for...
Line up with the, line up with the neighboring bulkhead.
Right then.
To the east and west, using shore guard, 575 material, 175-foot retaining wall, approximately 10 feet from the new bulkhead, to help stabilize the toe of the bluff. There's no changes at all to this. So it, it could advance as a renewal as it is. So you guys good with that?
Sure.
The next one is one of my permits, Alex and Megan McConavitz, 5 Lincoln Avenue, Hampton Bays, Interscienc. Are you here to speak to this one? We've got an in-place replacement of approximately 54 linear feet of a concrete seawall with approximately 54 linear feet of vinyl bulkhead, in-place replacement of approximately 14 linear feet of timber retaining wall as a return, with approximately 14 linear feet for vinyl bulkhead, removal and replacement of a concrete patio with an aggregate splash zone extending 10 feet landward of the new bulkhead.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Grant Liner from Interscienc Research Associates on behalf of the applicant, Alex and Megan McConavitz. I have some items to share with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Just pass them over here first thing you can stand.
Oh, yeah, right. It's just sets of everything you have.
It's good.
So that way you can all look at it together.
Thank you.
Actually, I need one of those back. One is mine. Mr. Horowitz was correct in his description of the project. It's a replacement of an existing bulkhead. The bulkhead has been, it's been stamped out already.
Thank you.
It has been in place for some time. Predates me, of course, probably most of you, probably back into the 50s, 40s. It's a concrete structure, and it is in a state of deterioration because of hurricanes, storms, hurricanes, Irene and Sandy. The house also took on some damage. As you can see from the photos that are going to be circulated to you, the house is only about eight feet from the edge of the northern parts of the bulkhead. And this property is one of those that surely needs some protection. So my, my client is looking to take out the concrete bulkhead, or the concrete seawall, remove the concrete patio from behind it, and create a... remove the concrete patio from behind it, and create a situation that's similar to the property directly to the south that the trustees approved not too long ago, which is a vinyl bulkhead with a 10-foot aggregate splash zone behind it. So then we, when we do have another super storm or hurricane that when the waves come up over the bulkhead, the energy ease will be absorbed by the bulkhead and the splash zone that is behind it. So again, the idea is to reciprocate exactly what had occurred on the property to the south. You can see in the photos that that property to the south, you know, abuts this property, and it'll be one continuous bulkhead as it currently is right now. So we believe this is in the best interest of the applicant and the trustees.
And you are preferring the use of aggregate to any type of buffer, vegetated buffer?
Again, we're reciprocating what the trustees had approved on the property to the south. The idea of the aggregate is to absorb the wave energy as the waters wash over the bulkhead, because, you know, they will, we've seen that it happened before, that this, the aggregate will take on the energy and allow the water to percolate back into the soil-
Drain faster.
And drain faster. If you planted a buffer behind it, vegetation wants to move a little bit easier than stone, so, again, we're only going off of what the trustees had approved on the property to the south.
This area gets overwashed a lot.
Yeah, it takes on-
I see, it's wet on a regular basis, this stone wall?
Yes.
Wet, the high tide's regularly-
When, when James and I were there, the water was actually about a foot up onto the wall.
Okay.
Because it was high tide.
If you see, rack lines are all the way up to here.
Sure, but where's this aggregate going?
Behind the wall. Just stone, stone buffer.
Yeah, just like-
Stone buffer.
Just look at the, if you can look at-
When you say wall, do you mean bulkhead?
Yes.
So you have a concrete wall currently-
Right.
And a concrete patio behind it.
Right.
The idea is to remove the concrete wall, replace it with a vinyl bulkhead, and then remove the concrete patio behind it and replace that with an aggregate material, like a stone.
Sure, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand how that's within the trustees jurisdiction.
10 feet behind the bulkhead.
10 feet behind.
No, that's for the bulkhead and its structural components.
Right, well, you still take jurisdiction at 10 foot.
Right, so it's going to have a return going back, so, and all the, all the laylogs and the dead men are all going to be within that zone, so-
Yes.
You're going to not reinstall a concrete patio, you're going to comply with the trustees' buffer regulations of sand or stone, because of the severe overwash, you're going to use a stone material so that it absorbs the energy and stays in place better, is that what you're getting?
Yes, yes.
Looks like the neighborhood-
No, not that, I think he's talking about this.
You know, where that walkway is?
Joining property, right?
I know, could be deceiving.
It's going to match this.
I think it may be deceiving because the, the stone is actually below the-
Like four inches, can we take?
No, I'm just, uh-
Am I, am I-
It may not quite be four inches.
It would just give you more area for water.
Right.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying.
We're open to that, too, if the trustees feel so.
I think that the patio has sunk.
Do you think?
I think that's why, it looks like the, it's higher.
Yeah.
So photo number four.
Yes, that's looking down the property to the south.
That's what you want to do.
Shows the property to the south.
And again, we're doing that because it's something the trustees have already approved, and it seems to be working. And we know that because our, our client owns the property that we're working, talking about right now, his parents own the property next door. So he's, he was actually involved in the installation of the material, and his parents were the ones that came to the trustees to get the approvals to do this work, and it was a long discussion with the trustees, and the trustees and the homeowner had come to the decision that this was the best course of action for this property because it is westerly facing, and with a southwest swell, you get a lot of wave action. If you look down the south end of this stretch of beach, it is fortified, you know, there is no stretch of beach I can think of that doesn't have a bulkhead in this area, because it gets a lot of wave energy during-
Where is this located?
Storms.
Uh, Lincoln Avenue, Hampton Bays.
Okay, so-
Ramp pasture.
Ramp pasture.
So, um-
Southern west side.
West side of Ramp pasture.
Oh.
Grant.
I know where that is. I actually stayed in that place, I rented that place.
There you go. This place?
Yeah, years ago. I know it looked familiar.
It's been around for quite a while.
Yeah, like 20 years ago.
When was the property to the south?
Your son's name is Alex?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
When was the property to the south done?
I have not yet pulled the permit, I just got, Alex sent me a picture of the permit, and he didn't get the whole thing of it, so I don't have the date.
Okay.
I'm going to be going to the trustees to pull the permit, so I can get all that information for you.
Okay.
Sounds like a good project to me.
Yeah.
I don't see what your alternative is.
No.
Plus, that, that's part of why-
Of course, conservation's got to step right in, and do, have a buffer pass at 10 feet.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's the next application, is we're going tomorrow to redo the property, where we're going to pick up more of a buffer, you know, because the house is shifting way back 50 feet from the bulkhead.
Yeah.
So, the project overall is a good project.
Sure, I mean, just if, getting rid of that concrete patio that's right on the, on the wall, where, with, you know, up the porous material versus everything just running right, right in there, it's good, change an add over.
Right, right.
Just make sure it's native stone.
Yeah, I think it's going to be cobble to match what's there.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, like aggregate was scaring us, right? The aggregate, the word aggregate.
Cobble, you like that word better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we can change-
Native verb, what did you say, native cobble?
Yeah, native.
Native stumble.
Okay, we can do that.
Because then it will all tie in and make sense, I don't see, there's not a lot of alternative there that you're going to be successful with.
Well, and then it fits in with the trustee jurisdiction of 10 feet for stone or sand being placed-
Correct.
Over the structural components of the bulkhead that extend into that 10-foot zone.
You good with that?
I'm fine with it.
Everybody's good with that?
You guys okay?
I'm always in favor of any type of vegetation so that there could be as much absorption as possible. In this case, I see that there are extenuating circumstances.
Case by case.
Well, if you look on back, this over here has the grass here, this, which, you probably have a lot of-
So do we want to just amend this to native stone, eliminate aggregate, or do you just want to put it as a term, a special condition?
Want these back for next time?
I'd rather it say native cobble, I mean, because it's really-
Can you just tweak that?
Yep, I'm in the app.
We could advance it, but we need to, we need a tweak on the app.
Plans.
We good with that?
Yeah.
So pending a updated cover sheet and plans?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you get them to us on Friday, Frank?
It's fine.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not here Friday, so tomorrow. You good?
You're not here Friday?
Not here Friday.
Okay, so tomorrow, is tomorrow?
We'll make it happen.
Okay.
If I can't make it happen, I'll let James know.
Okay, thank you.
I'll do my best to make it.
Thank you.
Thanks for- Any other questions?
No.
No, but you can, you can stay, are you doing 951, um, this, see address?
951 Flying Point LLC.
Flying Point LLC, LLC.
That's not me, but I'm doing 97 Roseway.
That's me.
That's you, Mr. Stafford. If you guys, if you're ready to do that one, I can do that one while I'm sitting here.
No, sir, can you get my file up?
Go right ahead.
I didn't know it was on, so I don't have plans with me, so please excuse me.
Is someone from your office doing this one?
I don't know who is doing that one.
They're not here.
I'm actually having a trouble finding which one you're talking about. Oh, it's 951.
Under second.
951.
Third one under. Bruce is-
Is that a dock?
Is it a dock?
Yeah.
Well, copy this one.
The walkway.
You are familiar with, with 97 Roseway?
97 Roseway, yes, I am familiar with that one, I can do that one really quick if you don't mind. So, we have a client who wants to basically upgrade what he currently has, and take a, I'll show you the photos maybe, it'll be a little easier. So he has a walkway that currently goes through the Fragmites out into Sam's Creek, and the float is damaged, the ramp is damaged, he wants to replace, and the walkway is taking on some, some rot, so he wants to replace everything, and as part of doing that, he wants to add a jet ski float, so-
The jet ski float has to be applied separately.
Right.
That is applied for with the jet ski, it has to have the registration and all that, and that's a three-year permit.
Right, so we, we removed the jet ski from the project.
Okay.
We're going to come back later. So the application has been amended to just replace what's there with trustee compliant material.
Okay.
It's basically an in-kind, in-place replacement of what's there.
Bruce?
No, I think it's a good project. James and I reviewed it, meets a blue book.
Meets a blue book?
The only question I had was that jet ski and the door already has, so.
Can I ask you a question? What's the height over the wetlands when you go there?
Well, that's the other thing, we are applying it right now with 26 inches, with the understanding that we're trying to comply with the trustees, we have a feeling that when we get to the Army Corps, we're going to get kicked back, and we're going to have to come back to the trustees for an amendment, you know, the whole game that we're playing. Because we are surrounded by Fragmites, there is such a thick stand of Fragmites here, it's, you know, typical Sam's Creek, strong creep scenario, can't see it. And so we would hope that the trustees might want to make a exception for this one to be able to be elevated if the Army Corps comes back, which we think they're going to, and make us raise it. So, that's where we are.
Because this, this permit, 951, you have it at four and a half feet over grade.
Again, that's to be in compliance with the Army Corps requirements, because the Army Corps has not yet conceded to the trustees on their 26-inch requirement, so we have a tendency, we have, we have trouble in the office trying to figure out what's the best way to proceed on this, you know, do you submit to the trustees with their requirements and hope the Army Corps will somehow come around, or do you submit to the Army Corps with their requirements and hope the trustees will come around?
So they did one and one?
So, my application, I submitted it with the trustees to get my trustee permit with the hopes that the Army Corps might concede. We know that that's likely not going to happen, so I might have to come back to the trustees to do an amendment to raise this up to four and a half feet. We know that the trustees are working to try to figure out how to resolve that, so we're stuck in that.
Well, this particular spot, the Fragmites, like you said, are so thick, you can't even see the damage.
Yeah, if we have to go to the four and a half feet, we'd hope, even if the trustees have to come out and look at it with us, we'd hope that the trustees recognize that this is an appropriate case for the four and a half feet. If you're, if you're willing to consider it, I will even amend this before you go to the Monday meeting with the four and a half foot elevation. Well, for Roseway, I mean, mean high water goes all pretty much up to the ramp, right? So, they're not going to, they're going to think it's, it's over water, they're going to, right, how, how high does it have to be for the Army Corps over water? Yeah, they're 20, they'll allow it to low profile. Right. There's this small section that is not. Yeah. It's very, very small, it's like three or four feet, it's enough for them to, to make our lives miserable.
So they would make you do three feet of it at four feet and then step down to 26 inches?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get this one through the Army Corps with the 26 inches.
Right.
I'm playing the game.
For three, four feet, yeah.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, but like I said, if the trustees are willing to consider the four and a half feet, I will make the amendment and come back to the trustees for the four and a half feet right now, rather than having to come back later.
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll make the amendment for three feet.
So, you'd rather just, I'm okay with you issuing the permit for the 26 inches with the recognition that I might have to come back and amend it.
I think we've, we've kind of come to grips with certain areas where we've been a bit flexible, no? We have. But it's, in a case like this where, you know, bulk of it should be compliant either way, where there's only three or four feet, that they would have to, you know, kind of, you know, allow, maybe that's the right way, the way you've already proposed it.
This is pre-existent too, and you can see all the stuff going around it.
She's thick down there.
I mean, the, the way the trustees have been handling this so far is that once an appender agent comes back and says, you know, the Army Corps is not budging, this is what they gave us, the trustees have, in several instances, because the blue book does allow you, as long as there's a majority of the trustees voting for it, to, you know, to vary it from the three feet required by the blue book.
Right, that's why I started this way. I think we all know the end result is that the Army Corps, if they push back, we're stuck, you know, and, well, I think that, you know, this, this one was worth a shot, but I'm also willing to amend our application right now to go to the four and a half feet if the trustees are willing to consider it because we are surrounded by Fragmites.
Could you try only because you're replacing in-kind and in-place?
It's pre-existent.
I think it's worth a shot.
And it's pre-existing?
What you, what, stay on the course of what you already started, I think is the way.
Okay, I'm okay with that, too.
When you're going to put flow, flow through deck on that?
Yes.
Because the Fragmites would be going right up through it.
Yeah, I know.
That's a good shot, it's a good pitch to send them and say, let's stick on a grow.
I mean, really, the Fragmites should be gone, you know, and if we can get more of our clients on board, you know, we would, we'd be doing these applications all the time, because I think it's a great thing. We have product, products that the trustees have approved that are currently ongoing that are proven successful, but they're long-term, you know, these are things that could, that take, you know-
Yes.
-tens of years to, to even get some kind of momentum on. But they're good projects, but we can't always convince clients to take on that cost or that, that headache. So yes, I will continue on the course of action that we currently have going, and there might come a day when I have to come back and get an amendment, or there may not.
So we're advancing this one?
Are we advancing, Bruce? Okay.
Roseway.
You want to stay and do this for your company, or?
Um, I can try, I can answer some questions generally, but I don't want to step on any of those, it's probably Jim's project.
You think it's ready to discuss, or you think it's going to be held for Jim, Bill?
Uh-uh. It's basically the same thing he has, but it's over four and a half feet. It's a new dock, not pre-existent.
It's, it's different.
Yeah.
So, this one, it looks like he's doing... He's not doing a float.
No.
He's just doing a catwalk to low water. This one has a water issue, so no float.
No float. He originally wanted a float, but we, we yanked that out.
And it looks like it's going over a marsh, so this main, oh no, it says Fragmites, so-
All Fragmites down.
It's all Fragmites down there.
It's pretty thick.
Yeah, so this is probably the same situation where Jim probably recognized that he's got an issue here where mean-high water and mean-low water are only a few feet apart. So, he's going mostly over vegetated wetlands.
Yeah.
So, here, the elevated walkway makes more sense in terms of what the Army Corps has been requiring. So, I would actually support Jim's application for the four and a half feet, given that he knows the Army Corps, because he's got one going on right now where the Army Corps has already pushed back.
Jam the clients up forever.
What did he do as far as handrails?
He has one handrail.
The handrails could be lightened up, but you need one handrail, at least on one side of that.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I believe he had two initially, but we had him take down.
One.
So, he modified it to one, James?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I haven't been to the site, but I can only imagine if it's in the area that I think it is that the frag mighties are thick.
Is that one of the new houses off Fowles Farm?
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah. So, it's another situation where you have thick frag mighties. It won't be seen, and Jim's been around the block. He doesn't have the same situation where I just had. So, I think that the four and a half feet is something the trustees may wanna consider here because otherwise, Jim will be coming back to you at a certain point in the future anyway to modify anything less.
We'll be compliant, James.
Yep.
We went through it for the last month, so, back and forth.
Do you wanna see it?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so you ready to advance?
Yes.
I've got one more.
951, Flying Point Road is gonna advance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's all that's on there for you, right?
There's also Watergate LLC.
We did that one.
That one's done.
Bruce has one more.
Five final sites.
I sat quietly as you guys renewed that one.
We renewed it. It was, it was.
Yeah, I figured that was a simple one.
Fifty-five amber side?
Is that Emily?
It has to be recalled.
Yeah, it's a recall and amend. They got a permit to remove frag mighties. They got a compliance for the permit because they did what they had to do within the year. But, now they're coming in for another permit, so what happened was it was issued as a renewal, but since it already had its compliance, it has to be a new permit.
A new permit, yeah.
So, it wouldn't be a renewal, it would just be a new permit. So, it's just language on the front that needs to be changed from renewal to regular permit.
Okay.
And that'll move on for Monday's meeting, so.
Correct. Do we have to make an amendment on the application?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's an easy one, thanks.
Was the permit already released to Inner Science for that one?
No.
Okay, so then, by the time you get the permit, it'll be based on the newly adopted resolution?
Correct, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. You too, Bill, you got?
Fifty-seven, Big Fresh Pond, Suffolk Environment. I think Matt's turn.
Okay, good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
Matt Ivan, Suffolk Environmental. How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, McAlpin Geraldo, you wanna walk through it? I missed the first go-around with this.
Yes, go ahead, you can go through it.
Okay, so, the owners, they received the trustee permit back in 2013 and constructed four-by-25-foot fixed elevated dock off their property into Big Fresh Pond. The pilings at the time were four-by-four. Since then, she's experienced almost routinely every winter ice damage. There's photos included in the application package, shows you the extent of damage. So, she came back to us and said, "Look, I've been repairing this thing almost every year. You think I can go back and get beefier piles?" The blue book allows up to six-by-sixes, and so that's what we are hoping to obtain, to reconstruct the dock as-is, no changes in length, width, but include six-by-sixes instead.
Traditionally, in freshwater, the piling sizes are, or the post sizes are, what?
We usually have docked, use four-by-fours like this, but I don't know why this is breaking, maybe.
I don't know, maybe just because on this, that floor line, that scratch, maybe?
Maybe the wind is pushing the ice that way, or, you know, you have one, you have a couple of bed poles, you know, EB.
I mean, she's, that's the thing, though, she's replacing the posts. I mean, you can see in that photo, I mean, they're literally splitting in half. I mean, it's not even a question of it like being, you know, pulled out from the bottom.
When did you say this was done, 2013?
Yeah, the original applica-, or the permit was issued back in 2013.
Might help me to put, just at the end, put six-by-sixes here and then just fix these four-by-fours, because these are gonna get hit first. Because these are break, once these break, then these break.
Well, do what, six-by-sixes not across, or just?
No, just at the end here.
Oh, but.
Then do, just fix these four-by-fours here.
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping to get them all, six-by-sixes, so she, you know, the problem solved. We hope.
Not all of them, not all of them are broken, just the outside four?
Yeah.
You wanna replace all of them now?
That's what I'm trying to say, I mean, like nip it in the bud. If the blue book allows it, that's the thing.
If the, if only the outside fours are broke, maybe just fix those and leave the other four-by-four.
Hold on, I think it was further down, wasn't it? I think the set behind that also was.
The picture here.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if the blue book allows.
I mean, we're doing, the thing is, we want, instead of, and the other thing, I made a mistake. It's not six-by-six, we're gonna go with round too, so hopefully gives the ice a little, you know, less purchase, you know, grip and power.
Put it in fat side down.
Well, just, yeah, just round, you know, but that's the thing, like, she just wants to nip it in the bud now. I mean, that's the thing, I mean, she puts in the, you know, the two six-by-sixes, the six-inch rounds and out, and then the same thing happens next year. It's like, you know, we're gonna be back again.
See, she doesn't take care of her sunfish either.
I know, I saw that. That may not even be hers, though, I don't even know.
It's tied to her dock.
No, I don't know, I have no idea.
I'd be in favor of doing the outside, you know, one, two, three, four, you know, with six, and leave these alone, unless they're, unless they're, unless they're broken now. I mean, there's no sense, you know, you know.
How much disturbance are you gonna create?
Yeah, disturbing the bottom.
By putting them in?
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be comparable to replacing the four-by-fours, you're still jetting them in.
What I'm saying is, you have to, if there's nothing wrong with them, leave them there.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but.
You know.
No, I know what you're saying, I mean, they could leave it in while they pull out pile by pile.
Yeah, I mean, if it's only the four outside, just do the four outside and leave the others alone, you know?
All right, let me, have a, what's my deadline for resubmitting for Monday, if you guys?
I mean, tomorrow. How many do you have in total? How many does he have in?
What, eight or ten?
What are we talking, ten, eight?
Ten.
Ten. You wanna do all ten to, to?
Just remedy the problem best we can.
Six-inch round.
Yeah.
And you wanna, you know, try and get ahead of the problem.
But, I mean, the thing is, the footprint of a round. There's no water in, a lot of times in the winter time, there's, these two are out of the water. So, I don't see.
But, the two most landward?
Yeah.
I mean, we can.
Because I take care of the property on his, you know, his, kind of his dock is like, there's no water there half the time.
All right, well, two things, and you wanna just go, I mean, would you allow me to do everything but the two most landward piles? But, the other thing, again, like, the footprint of a round pile versus six-by-six versus six-inch diameter, it's a smaller footprint, the round.
The round.
I mean, if you're talking about, you know, disturbance, the increase in disturbance, I mean, it's minimal.
Well.
You know what I mean?
Okay, well, let's do the last three on either side, so you do six, leave the other four alone, close to the shore.
I'm not gonna ask her, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you got the company that wants, right, you're getting them back.
But, also, you're disturbing the bottom, you know?
But, again, one way or the other.
This one, how much difficulty are you gonna have?
But, it's not, nothing's.
I would compare to put in four-by-fours, I mean, just replacing, well, think about it this way, too, you guys. I mean, if this solves the problem, we're not going and making the disturbance every year, replacing these things.
Yeah, but the other four, if they're not broken, the first two sets are not broken. If they're all broken, I have no problem.
No, I understand what you're saying.
If the, if the first four aren't broken, just leave them alone and replace, you know, the outside.
All right.
And if she wants to do it and it meets the blue book, and she wants to spend the money while they're there, I mean, it's up, you know, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean.
So, why don't we do a, do a site inspection again?
You do a site inspection?
And, you know, I'll go down there, you go down there and count the broken ones.
Well, I mean, I could, if you want, I'll just go down there and take photos and send them there.
Yeah, take a photo.
Yeah, but.
Don't break the other, don't break all of them, you know?
You know, I'm trying to, trying to diet here, Bill, really, he's just so insensitive. But, no, I'll go down there, I'll take the photos. I'll bring it up to her, I mean, she may be all for it, but.
So, we're going on hold, is what I'm hearing here?
Yeah, I'll try to get you the photos. Want me to just email them again?
Yeah, just email them, yeah.
But, we're holding that, though, Bill, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Board.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Just kidding.
Next one is Seventy Spring Point Road. I think Sean is, I think Sean is doing this one?
Seventy Cold Spring Point Road? It's Coal Environmental, Seventy Cold Spring Point Road, that one?
Cold, yeah.
No.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, Seventy Cold Spring Point Road.
Yeah, I don't think Cold's doing it.
The one after that.
Yeah, this one's Coal Environmental.
Yeah, I don't think, I think they switched.
Oh, they did?
No, no, that's right.
No, it's right.
Coal Environmental is Seventy Cold.
Okay, sorry.
What do you got?
I misread it. This is to modifying plans. In place, in place, in place to replace a 40-feet of linear timber, timberhead bulkhead with new vinyl bulkhead with no height increase, add a six-inch, six-foot return to the eastern end, remove existing vegetation and exist behind the bulkhead and store it along shoreline for replanting. The farm bulkhead be installed backfill as needed approximately five cubic yard of material. All material be non-treated and placed in a non-10-foot fertilized native vegetable buffer behind the bulkhead. Basically, he has a lot of good plants behind the bulkhead now. He's gonna dig them up and remove them and replace the bulkhead. Let's see his plants. These are the plants. The pitch is short, brother. James, you have any comments on this one?
Yeah.
So, what is it, Mr.?
Where's the survey? It'd be helpful to see.
They sent, they sent modified plans.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, that we requested. It should be.
Do you have a scale, Louis?
Just the same as this?
Here's the modified plan I hear, because it says March 28th.
Yeah, it should be.
You okay, Lisa?
Replacing?
Vinyl, timber bulkhead with vinyl bulkhead?
And dock piles.
And adding, and adding six-foot return.
Yeah. The flow is staying, the flow is already there.
Removing vegetation that exists behind the bulkhead, storing it along the shoreline for planting following bulkhead installation.
Then if he needs more, he's gonna buy more.
Right, and it's a 10-foot non-fertilized native that would buffer behind the bulkhead. No height increase in the bulkhead.
Yeah, I know, but I guess. Yeah, I mean.
What, Martha?
No, just, it's, it's close to the property line, but I guess, it's like within the 10-feet zone.
Yeah.
Close. It hasn't been an issue.
No. It's all small pieces of property down there.
I understand. Can I see a picture?
Yeah, Gus, pass the pictures down, she wants it soon.
Can I see the cover sheet?
There's a pretty extensive description on the plans, too.
Just the most recent?
What's the, what's the data on the top?
Is this common practice to remove the plantings and store them, and then?
If, if, if the plants are what's saving, then we try to do it, and that was one of my ideas, instead of, you know?
So, store them?
Yeah, probably over here where they can get wet in the water.
Do you want us to pictures?
I need it, just a second. So, this is 40? You got, you, so he's doing 40 there?
It's 40.
It's 40. Now, replacement of 40 linear feet, no height increase, six-foot return to the eastern end, remove existing and backfill, but yet the plans are showing replacing pilings as well, right? One of the plans that you've shown, you had, indicates that it's replacing some pilings, but it's not listed on here.
It's not listed on the cover sheet?
On the sheet, right, then they can fix that.
Those are the pilings for the?
For the dock?
No, for the bulkhead.
For the bulkhead.
No, I thought for the dock. Where's the, where's the plans?
It says replace existing, oh, yeah, it does say, replace existing dock piles in place in kind as necessary.
So, that's gotta be added.
Yeah, you have to add it too, and he gets charged, good for all.
Yeah, they're missing that.
Add that to the cover sheet.
Right.
But, I recommend that if they can put it in a conforming location for the bulkhead, then that should.
I don't know what the extenuating circumstances that has that off to that side, I don't know.
It's the water issue.
Water depth issue, so it got moved. Yeah.
Look at our shoulder on both sides.
Yeah, and I see.
It was pushed over there for an environmental reason.
Yeah.
But, they, they do have to make the cover sheet match the plan.
Yeah.
And it doesn't right now.
I would, if this gets approved, I would like to see a notation, probably in the special permit, in the permit conditions, acknowledging that, the reason, you know, the.
For the proximity.
Why, why the dock is so close?
Exactly.
Proximity of the proper length?
I mean, it's, it's like eight feet, but I, I think that, you know, if we can capture why.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Then we should have the permit tell the whole story.
So, you have Cold, give Cold a call and have.
I don't know what the.
We can put it on.
If it advances.
You have to have the cover sheet.
Well, he's gonna, yeah, he's gonna have to fix the cover sheet anyway.
Because Cold doesn't move that fast.
All right, so you got the notes, though, right?
So, we're gonna hold it, Bill?
Yeah, hold it. To have the cover sheet moved and have the language put in for this.
That can be language that the trustees insert in the permit, explaining why the pilings are being. And James and I can work on that if one answers.
So, that's on hold. Then you have, then you have Sean Baron.
Yeah, that's Sean Baron. Yeah, Coal Spring Point Association.
How you guys doing?
Do take the gradient of the road surface application seeking to extend existing bulkhead with addition 45-feet linear low-profile bulkhead plus 100 square feet of 200-pound to 500-pound stone armor along the toe of the bulkhead to be placed approximately 20 feet, 21 feet long row of one to two 10 boulders to be planted, and to be plant, plate, planted in the area between the stone armor bulkhead and the row of the boulders with beak grass. One foot on center. Think Martha had some issues with this.
Did?
Yeah, he said that.
Can I see the maps or the plans?
It was, I think more to do with the association coming in and if endorsements from, something about endorsements from everybody's property who touches the road.
So, Coal Spring Point Road is a private road?
No, I, I know, because there's an application, the association has an application for creating an emergency turnaround as well.
Right, this is not that.
No, no, I know that's not that, so I'm not sure what it was that. Are you sure I had a question about this?
Well, he said that you had a question, you wanted.
That's what James said to me.
Yeah, I talked to you about it because it's a private road, and do, we need, we need people from the whole private road to have. Uh, do, we need, we need, uh, people from the whole private road to have, to give permission, correct?
No, the association is empowered.
Okay, so the association...
The association is empowered to make decisions concerning the maintenance of the people of the road.
Okay. That seemed like a...
No, no, I have those documents from the conservation board application, so I've, I've researched this issue.
So, it's no problem, they, they don't need...
A couple of hundred endorsements, no, thank you.
No, they, they don't, um, the, like, the HOA formation, the Association of Formation documents...
Allow them to act on that, yeah, perfect.
Allow them to...
We, several years ago, we gave them a permit to do the first part of this, and it cut the road down farther. I'd say maybe about five years ago, six years ago.
Yeah, so there's already, there was an existing bulkhead that was installed, I think about, about forty-five feet or so of it, and some, some stone armoring and some plantings, and we're basically just mimicking that and extending it forty-five feet to the east, where it's getting chewed up the most.
Sorry, I just wanna see, let me see.
High water comes...
Protects the road.
How far off is it from mean high water?
Um, some of it's gonna hit it, and some of it's pre-fall. It's almost like... But if the part what hits it...
Plans again, sorry.
The part what hits it, we should, you know, we, once it hits it, then it, we should take the whole length of it. Yes, ma'am. It's down there.
So, on the plan, the 1.75 elevation is identified as the, the average high water? So, like, your normal everyday tide's probably ten feet off of the road edge, but during, you know, any sort of spring tide or storm conditions or anything like that, the water is at the edge of the road?
Are there any options to the boulders?
Without that, without that, if, if stuff is, the boulder's there to sort of break up the wave energy that's gonna otherwise bounce off the bulkhead?
Are there any options?
And we're gonna plant, you can actually see the, the rocks, well, the rocks seem to have done a decent job.
Yeah.
They're already down there. I'm not sure if plantings would get washed away.
Yeah.
I suppose you could, yeah.
Even if you put, um, um, logs down here, the, the plant, the, the log where you plant...
Oh, like the biolog type of thing?
Biologs, they're gonna, they're gonna move when you get some bad weather.
Do you have photos of this?
There's some in the application, yes.
Yeah, they're down, Martha has the photos.
May I have the photos?
What was the prior project?
The prior project...
So, there's the existing, yeah, the existing bulkhead. Can I steal those pictures and pass them down?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is the prior project.
The property to the...
Back in last... Two thousand and eleven. And it was, it was, back then it was quite vented how we, you know, it was, it was a lengthy process.
But we're really, I said, just looking to do the, to do the same thing and extend it a little further as necessary.
Well, I had James pull that permit to, to mimic it.
There's not a lot of wave action in here, though.
The inlet is, the inlet's right here, and...
Gets surge in there.
It gets a lot of surge. Anytime there's a good nor'easter, this, this part of the road, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if this was underwater. The first time I went to go check on this in the fall, we couldn't even get down Cold Spring Point Road, because by the, by the entrance was underwater.
Get on nor'easter, it comes right around, yeah. Comes right around, and then it goes right over.
And it's close enough to the inlet where there is some, some wave action that bounces around, the bulkheads on the other side, things like that.
Are we treating this as an amendment of the previous?
No, it's a new application.
Why, could we, they do amendment to the old, it's pretty old to do amendment to?
I don't think you can do that.
No.
Can I see other projects described in the current application? What's about an extension of the existing project, so...
I think at one time, when they were, originally, they wanted to do it longer. And they, we cut it back. What did you say?
I mean, my description is just an extension of that existing bulkhead. I didn't mean to imply that it was an amendment or, you know, it's a new application in my mind, but...
I didn't hear what you said.
You know, I, I, in my opinion, when projects take place entirely landward of mean-high water, they're not in the trustee's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
But if we're viewing this as an extension of a structure already permitted by the trustees...
Yeah, that's what we do.
Then...
There you go.
I, I will leave it up to the trustees to determine their exertion of jurisdiction here.
What are your thoughts on the project?
I would so much prefer if there was any option here other than shore hardening. You know what? Could, uh, could we just hold this so I can do a site visit?
Yeah, no problem.
Sure.
Would that be okay?
I, I would say that I'm sure, you know, nobody wants...
You will also take a look at it, I've been down this several times.
And nobody wants to do shoreline hardening if it can be avoided, but I think that argument was probably, that horse was beaten to death probably in the last application.
It surely was.
The, you know, this is the road that people get to their homes, if it's not protected, people aren't gonna have access, they need to get to their homes. This is pretty minimal, it's a low sill bulkhead, just a repeat of what's there. The idea that first row of boulders is to stop any wave energy from destroying the plants that we're trying to establish. So, that's, you know, without that, it's just gonna wash away.
Trying to do like a living shoreline type of project, give some backup.
You check it out, there's no vegetation there now, it's just bare sand, right? It's getting, it's getting beat up pretty good, and it's scalloping, you can see how it's scalloping out.
What, when we, but we're doing a, like a semi-living shoreline would plant behind this, this would go up farther, and then you, you would have a living shoreline behind you.
Correct.
Okay.
You got providing some, some backup there, because it's obviously important access for people's homes, so...
Right, well, yeah, so I guess the other option would be something like dumping a bunch of earth and material against the road to try and bolster it up, but that's actually gonna end up probably spilling in, into the water if you did something like that, you know? We don't have a lot of distance.
Living shoreline could be a good thing.
Sure, no, no, I mean...
It's a good, solid, you know, compromise to try and get, you know, get the protection that the people need to get to their homes.
And get some vegetation, for sure.
Get the vegetation.
What, we made a mistake on the original one, it should have been native boulders instead of, um, the stuff, the gray, gray stones.
Just if I could take a look at it, or maybe suggest that all of us take a look at it?
Oh, no, by all means, of course.
The importance of getting, I just haven't been, I've been on the beach chair, I just haven't been on the road.
Me and Ed's been down there several thousand times.
Okay.
But, you know, I don't know about Scott or, um, who's, or you, because he wasn't on the board.
If we had a little weather, it'd suggest going down there, you know, or a nice full moon tide or something. Very into the conditions.
I know it flood.
Well, yeah, just to see what's up, yeah.
So, Bill, we're holding that?
Yeah, we're holding it over.
Hold it over.
Thank you.
When am I coming back?
When do, when do you wanna, you wanna put him on now, or you wanna give him a call?
We could do it next, next work session.
Next work session is May fifteenth.
Yeah.
There's your answer.
Thanks, sir.
May fifteenth, sir. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Trustee Stafford.
Did I get all the plans back then?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything either, I think. Oh, wait a second, though. No, this is...
That's yours.
That is, that's mine, yeah. Trustee Stafford.
Carolyn Hirsch, this is the first renewal. Eleven fifty-one Flying Point Road Watermill, first coastal through the project. This typing gets much smaller, I'm gonna be in trouble. Project to perform dune restoration by placing approximately thirty-five hundred cubic yards of clean beach, confitable sand on the eroded dune. To plant beach grass twelve on center, the dune restoration will be performed at the September first, two thousand and eighteen, before March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Install two hundred of sand fencing, one to two rows to be installed. Twenty-by-four, eighty-square-feet temporary stairs in spring to be removed by fall. If the fall dune restoration is not performed temporarily, stairs will be reinstalled March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and removed before November first, two thou, uh, two thousand and nineteen. And to install fifty-seven-by-four, two hundred and twenty-eight square feet, a permanent stair walkway, and three hundred and fifty-five square feet deck to be installed in kind and place due to the full dune restoration project that has been completed, and the South Hill Town trustees were notified seven days prior to work starting, no treated materials to be used, stakes to be in place where beach fencing is going to be located. He's just renewed his permit.
This is one of several?
Yep.
Beach nourishment, all in a row?
Yep.
All the permits were issued at about the same time, right?
Yes. She's got, I think there's another piece of property that she's got, too. But I don't see the, uh, renewal for that one.
This is in the, um, in the...
Hotspot area.
The beach nourishment.
Yes, to the left of Flying, you know.
Between the cut and Flying Point public beach.
You're advancing?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we got Kenneth Segal.
Yeah, eighty-one Wheaton Way. We're waiting on some paperwork, did we get that?
I believe we did, it should be in there.
This is Kenneth Segal, eighty-one Wheaton Way, Watermo, New York. We are proposing to a hundred ninety-four-feet elevated catwalk that includes stairs and proposed landing at the end of the catwalk. That'll be six by fifteen. Catwalk will be constructed off-site and delivered, and four-by-four sections post will be put in and to be surfaced in light-penetrating decking to be used, all untreated wood and post.
Just to add to the application, I have reviewed paperwork on it, because there's a scenic and conservation easement, and that easement does allow for the placement of catwalks, so it's, it's a permitted structure.
Nobody here speak to this application? No?
Nobody here.
Blue Book compliance?
This is Adam Miller Group, who's doing this.
Yeah, and they submitted the work, the updated plans that we needed.
Totally one set.
We're advancing this?
I, the height of this, this is, um, adopt, adopted resolution, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, by the Conservation Board. It says the Conservation Board received the wetlands permit application, Kenneth Segal, July second, two thousand and eighteen, where proposed eighty-one Wheaton Way. And it says, um, that this has to be four foot above the wetland. Is it, okay?
Hey, Bruce, is there a conservation easement anywhere on this property?
That's what this is, or...
No, there's, there's two different things.
Two different things.
There is a Conservation Board approval.
Yep.
And pursuant to that Conservation Board approval, they granted a declaration of covenants and restrictions, but in addition to that, there is also a scenic and conservation easement over the property, which, and the scenic conservation easement allows for the construction of a catwalk specifically. With respect to the Conservation Board, it really doesn't matter, because under chapter three twenty-five of the town code, anything that requires a trustee permit does not require a wetland's permit, so if we're approving a catwalk, then the only thing that we had to analyze was whether or not it was permitted under the conservation easement.
Okay.
Blue Book compliance?
Yep.
Just respectfully, it's good to go.
Just one here, Bruce.
It's gone.
Are we advancing that, Bruce?
Yes. I've got one more.
Two more. You got CF Realty, and you got three twenty-six Cobb Road.
CF Realty, uh, ten Vitali Silly, which is off Clover Street. This again is Adam Miller Group. We are proposing a seventy-two elevated catwalk that includes stairs and ramp. There'll be a six-by-twenty floating dock at the end, the catwalk will be constructed off-site, delivered in sections, six-by-six posts will be installed, and it'll be surfaced with light-penetrating decking, supported by untreated wood posts. This is located on Vitali Silly Drive, which is a private dirt road. Off Clover Street. He, this particular house is close to WNG radio.
What is the, um...
Water?
It says, says it has enough water. Thirty-seven inches. Can actually be pulled back some. What is the pier line at this price? Do you know up here?
It's, I believe it's sixty... I believe it's sixty feet was the say, huh?
Sixty feet.
Right.
For pier lines?
It's, uh... Sixty feet.
Do we have plans showing the catwalk where it originates on the property?
Uh, yes. Find out, I showed up, send the, uh... Conservation easement. Is that in the village?
No, so, right.
Yes, oh, yeah.
It's in the village.
Just, just so that we're clear, conservation easement is different from what Marty Shay requires for the Conservation Board, that's a declaration of covenants and restrictions, it is not for conservation easement.
This is in the village, anyway.
Right. But I'm just, I'm noting, I'm noting here that it shows, you know, a, a non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer, so it's just important that we, you know, they're, they're two very different documents from a legal perspective.
So, is this catwalk coming back? Are we, are we shortening this catwalk?
No, I don't...
No, I don't think so.
It's, it's twenty-two feet long?
Right.
And twelve feet of floating dock.
Mm-hmm.
Where's mean-high water?
It's... What do you mean it's tw, it's, hold on a second, where's, where's the...
It says right there, twenty-two plus.
It's, it's sixty feet long, right?
It's supposed to be sixty...
Sixty, not twenty-two feet.
But you're adding this together.
Overall length.
Well, I'm looking at the depth that the floating dock is at. Well, beyond, um...
Right, but they're allowed sixty feet from the high-water mark out.
But do we allow sixty feet, or do we go to, or do we go to the water depth?
The water depth.
So, if we go to the water depth, then you gotta shorten it.
Okay, so what's the pier line for, then?
Well, that's the maximum.
The max.
Right, right.
You go to the water depth, and you can't go beyond the pier line. Right, so once you hit, once you hit the water depth...
That's, that's where you stop.
That's where you stop, so they took the full sixty, right?
Um, well, for mean-high water, they are at fifty-five feet from the line of mean-high water that they're showing. If you go from their property line, then they're at fifty-eight.
But they're indicating on their plans...
But also the plans, um, it says that the water depths are different.
Right, so, so this is showing that it's well beyond thirty, right?
Yeah, the other one shows it's right at, oh, close.
What's the, uh... Where do these steps come in? Who did these soundings?
Did the soundings? Soundings per others, so it's from other surveys, perhaps.
Ah, so you know what? Take a look at this, take a look at your soundings.
They don't match up.
Okay. So, if we request a hydrographic, well, you, you need, you need, you need sight the thing exactly where it's supposed to be, as per the Blue Book, and then you're good to go. Right?
You want a call tomorrow? Right, we'll hold it.
So new soundings, and if it's, you know, bring it back to...
It's gotta go, yeah, you get it to exactly where it applies with the blue book.
Because the soundings are very deceiving on that.
I've got another one, 326 Cobb Road LLC, 326 Cobb Road Waterbill. Construct a four-by-20 extension to offshore end of existing fixed dock. Install a three-by-16 seasonal aluminum ramp onto a six-by-20 seasonal float dock secured by two four-by-four anchor posts.
Does it say on the cover sheet that the floating dock is to be stored in an upland location?
It doesn't say here, but we can put that on.
Yeah, that's a regulation we put on. A special condition.
Right.
This one's all blue book compliant, James?
Let's say asking for another cover sheet to include that be stored off-site seasonally?
Well, it says seasonally on the cover sheet. It's a condition that we put on when it says that.
Right, but I don't want them dragging it up on a shoreline either.
Right, that's gonna be in the condition. It has to be landlord of the wetlands.
That's already gonna be in.
Yeah, okay.
James, is that a special condition, or is it built into the permit?
It's something that I can put on conditions. It's already written.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should we advance that one?
We're advancing that, James?
Please, yes.
Okay.
All right, you're all done, Bruce?
Yes. Okay. So I have a recall resolution 2019-91. James, you want to expand upon that?
Yeah, it should show what it's highlighted and what needs to be changed.
Must change to reflect.
Got the wrong plan date on there?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be 2/25/19 as opposed to January 11, 2019. That's the only change.
Right.
You're gonna reference the correct date on the plans, the correct set of dated plans.
Okay.
Simple. They updated the cover sheet.
I'll do it. Between Martha and myself and James.
Okay, but clearly understandable.
So if we could please...
Advance that.
Advance that. Thank you, Lisa.
Yes.
Okay, Gina, would you like to come up? Because these are all three yours. So the first two, Mark and Robin Tesarsky, 32 Seafilled Lane, and also Mark and Robin Tesarsky, 46 Seafilled Lane.
Want to do 46 first?
Sure. Which one, 46?
Yeah, let's do 46 first.
Okay.
Reconstruction of existing dock. It's slightly longer because the DEC asked me to make sure that the entire float was a two-and-a-half feet of water underneath. So the existing dock is 117 feet for the first portion. The new one is 124. I made the ramp longer, a 20, which is appropriate for the area because the tidal range is almost four feet there. So...
And what is the pier line in this creek?
I believe it makes a pier limit. I don't believe, I don't know if there is one, but it's comparable to every other dock in the area. I just did one at 60 Seafill like three years ago. It's identical to that one.
You have one handrail on one side?
We were going to do two. There's two actually on the dock right now. They're just the small two-by-fours on edge, or maybe an optional rope rail, so it looks that nautical look. Yeah, I like that.
Do you specify it somewhere?
I specify a low-profile rail.
I see that, I see that in, on the plans I'm looking at here.
It's in the wording. It says low-profile railing on the actual plan.
Are they gonna be decked the whole thing, flow-through?
Yeah, the whole thing's gonna be through flow.
The whole part through?
Yeah. I don't do a dock without through flow, no, at all. There is no choice.
I mean, just like, you know, on the handrails, I always think it's good to specify exactly what, that way there's no misunderstandings if people are like, wait a second.
It's just the...
Is that what you're saying? It's just...
Two-by-four on edge.
Actually, like Scott said, have it in the plans, because what you think is low-profile flow.
Originally, they weren't shore, so I gave them some choices. I know on the other side, we did a rope, but they preferred the two-by-four on edge.
So just, you know...
Because I think right here, you got five-by-quarter on it.
I could put timber. I could put low-profile timber.
Just spec it so that it's clear.
Lumber rail.
Not ambiguous. That way, there's no issue moving forward. It's clearly defined. That's it. I think that's fair.
Yeah, a future reference.
And is there a pier line?
Length, no, but it's comparable to all the docks in the area.
Dock lengths and tidal waters would be what you're...
The bit of follow-to-the-east is a pier line.
Right, right. Over the other side of the bridge source.
And the height on this is four-and-a-half feet.
Because the topography kind of demands it. Yeah, it goes like, did you go down there? You know, it kind of goes, and then it just drops. Thank you.
Does, are we okay to move this forward? Does anyone have any faults?
Blue book compliant, you can get, you know, you specify...
Yeah, the handrails.
The handrails, I think, you know.
We're fine. I'm fine.
If you can change the handrail language by tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Yeah, sure.
Because James isn't here.
I'll just put two-by-four. I'll add two-by-four to the wording.
And use our handrail?
Yeah, that's in here. But I'm just gonna put the two-by-four low-profile rail line.
So we're advancing pending, we still got a new cover sheet, James?
Cover sheet and...
Two-by-four can be like five-quarter by four. That's like more, two-by-fours is thick.
Okay.
Five-quarter by four.
Five-four to range five-four.
Yeah, because what you have on it now is five-quarter by six.
Yeah, that's a little...
Yeah, yeah.
Do five-quarter by four.
Five-quarter by four. Good idea.
That would make more sense.
Same thing for the...
Same thing for the, yeah, the mid-rail. Up at top, I'll specify top and mid-rail. It'd be five-quarter by four. No problem. Okay, the next one is just to the north, also owned by the same property owner.
It's adjoining property?
Right. There was an old dock there. It's, you can see it. There's like boards sticking out. But I reconfigured it just slightly, so it's still in the area of disturbance previously, but just angled it to the south just a little bit to get to deeper water. But there is one little change that I will redo the cover and redo the plans for you. Corv engineers asked me to move it off the property line a little bit more. So what I did was flip the float, and I made it an L, so it met the hypothetical 15-foot property line boundary. So here's the new plan. So you can take a look at it. And this was just recently, this just happened yesterday, which I think is probably better anyway.
What do you have on for the handrails reveal?
Same thing, but I'll do the same, I'll do exactly the same thing, the five-quarter by four.
These are the new plans? Where the dock is flipped and it's a...
So I'll switch the cover. I'll give you new plan sets. I'll specify that it'll be, the float will be on an L instead of going out straight.
Okay, so with changes to the handrail on both the cover sheet?
Yes, and the plans.
On the cover sheet?
Where's it?
Thank you.
On the L sheet?
Yeah, because I want to make that 15-foot setback. It's the only way I could do it, is just flip the float, the easiest way, and still move the depth a little bit.
So once again, Gina, if you can make the changes by tomorrow?
Absolutely.
So we're advancing on the same condition then, pending new cover sheet plans?
I'll email it. I'll email PDFs, right?
Okay.
To everybody. Okay, the next one is for Hampton Court and Marina. There was a pre-assisting permit for mean and dredging. I discussed with James because we, Chesterfield already completed the project and sent in the commencement and completion notices, but it has to be worded as a new permit because the old one was finished. But we intend on...
Renewing it.
Right, we wanted to do the four-time renewal, but, so it'll have to be written as a new permit since it was done.
And James, you're okay with that?
Yeah, we've done it before.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's on the...
But am I still allowed to do four times? I'm allowed to do it four times, like the typical renewal?
No, because you complete, by dredging it, you complete the work, unless they want to write in permit that says that. But with a one-year permit, you completed the work at the end of the year for the dredging.
Okay.
We close it out, you're in compliance, then you come in.
Reapply for a new permit.
You can't renew it because you closed it out.
No, no, I understand that. I just, you know, do I have to submit new information every four years, every year for four years?
Yeah, because it's not like the DEC or Army Corps where you have a 10-year maintenance permit. We don't have that yet.
Unless I renewed it before we did the work?
Gina?
Do I have to do that?
No, because once you have a, we come and inspect it, the job is done.
Right.
It's a maintenance dredging issue.
Obviously, we've had a lot of paperwork to issue to begin with, and you have DEC permits.
Yeah.
It's all gonna weigh into the decision-making, obviously. You know, it's just a matter of how our paperwork and procedures are set up.
Still trying to, you know, there's new rules. We're still trying to navigate what we're allowed to do in that.
Like a five-year maintenance permit from us and see where, you know, we would have to change the blue book.
Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah, but we don't have, we don't have...
We would have to change the blue book if we do that.
Right, we would have to change the blue book. I mean, it's something that we could explore for projects like that.
Yeah, because DEC, they allow, their permits good typically for five years.
Because that one area where, where you live, they have, they dredge that all the time.
Chills in all the time, and like Hampton Court and, sorry, the other one, Hampton Association and Southampton Town, that'll be coming up again. I just renewed that. That one I did do a renewal about, we did the work. Yeah, so DEC is generally good for five years. And then when we go to renew the five-year permit, they give us a one-time 10-year maintenance permit. And then we have to reapply all over with new information. But so that's how they were.
That's something, a good idea to explore because, perfect example, you know.
Yeah, because when you gotta dredge, you gotta dredge. You gotta window, you gotta make it, you know, open a waterway up.
I think we should, we should talk about that, change on the maintenance dredge.
Yeah, so that, and that, so that one will be coming up next year, the Hampton Association and East Quogue, Southampton Town property.
Same thing, Pinnock Landing is a maintenance dredge.
I want to be able to renew Pinnock too, right? I want to be able to do that every year, so they could just do the work, do the work, do the work in the window. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So, it's a good idea.
That makes sense.
And we're advancing that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
I'll email you that stuff, okay? And then I'll copy you.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else have anything that they want to discuss before we go into executive session? You here for...
I'm sorry, my name is Karen Bell.
You gotta come up here.
Jordan indicated we were gonna be on today for just a second renewal for, can you place in? Is he on the agenda there? 5 North Road?
I'm not on that.
Anyone?
I know the property. It's over by the canal, the old...
Under construction right now.
It's not on the agenda, obviously.
What would it be on for? It would be under second renewal for Ed. We don't have it up here.
No, it's not.
I think I had it on there.
It was all that was given to me is what was on today.
When does it, when does it expire?
I gave you everything I have.
Yeah, I don't have, there's nothing in the bucket, right?
You recall seeing an application?
Yeah, I definitely seen.
Okay, so you made application to renew?
Yes.
And Ed, did Ed say it was gonna be up today?
Jordan King sent us an email saying it was gonna be on. It expires, let's see.
No changes?
No changes. Under, you know, work is, they'd only want a one-year renewal because they expect it to be done shortly.
Could we hold it till next time only because...
It's not, yeah.
It's not here. It's, and there's a little confusion as to why it's on.
What's your expiration?
I just wanted, yeah, I'm just trying to find where that would be indicated. It's not standard of plan, right?
It could still be renewed.
And it brings a folder, sorry. Yeah, I didn't bring the full folder.
Have you started any of the, of the activities?
Yeah, it's underway.
You've said, they've sent a commen, they've sent a commencement already?
Yes.
So...
And this is just, like I said, a second renewal because it's just been, the work has been ongoing there. Yeah, but we don't have a date on here, sorry.
All right, you know what?
Well, the first issuance was May 31st, 2017, so it should be May 31st, 2019.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, so we have some, we have some time.
May 15th, so.
We have to, we have a little bit of time, and you have made application to renew it, and now obviously you're bringing it to our attention, so.
And if, you know, we could, James could contact you, if there's no change in it, you might not even have to show up.
Yeah, if there's no issue, and you've already commenced.
Yeah, there's no changes.
No changes.
It's.
The reason why we have it where you could renew it that way is, you know, to not have operational difficulties, especially in the middle of a project.
Right.
You know, it takes time waiting for all the regulatory authorities to grant permission. When you get it and start?
Right.
You don't want to get jammed up in the middle of it, I understand.
But we could get our ducks in a row and it could go on for May 15th?
Well, I mean, we could get our ducks in a row, it could go off sooner than that, because if it's a renewal.
It is renewal, stuff.
Renewal, no, Agina, it doesn't go through, it doesn't go through the whole process all over again, and they've already commenced.
Yeah.
Under the existing permit terms and conditions, and nothing has changed.
Right. And I did review it with Ed.
Yeah, Ed, Ed has to just say the final.
Speak to Ed, and it'll either be on for this week, or it'll be on for the next, but either way, it'll be ahead of that schedule.
It's still within your window of Mesa.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just as long as we're not in danger of it expiring, that would be a problem.
Our next work session is the.
Either way, you have an expiry, you have a?
Thirty days.
Yeah, you have a leaning, you guys.
Yeah, but they've already commenced.
Ninety days after the expiration, so.
James, are you able to pull up?
It's not coming up with a permit.
I know, I was having trouble with my manager, I mean, my, my sentiment is that, you guys want to hold it until Ed?
Yeah.
What's your sentiment, she's already commenced? It's a renewal.
I'm just gauging the board.
Yeah.
You know, if we could get the permit up right now and just.
I can run down and grab it if you guys want.
Let me see if I can get it up on the laptop.
It's not coming up.
Sorry, I don't have that with me.
Where's the application?
I have, that's our application, brought up such plans.
James, do you have it, you got me to look it up?
And the survey, if anyone wants to check it out.
Like, four or five different properties?
You want me to look it up in government, right?
Yeah. My manager's fine. Let me try it on the front.
Thank you for at least hearing me, I appreciate it, because I know I'm not on the agenda, but that was a surprise.
But apparently, there's a little confusion here, so.
Yes.
Isn't it like, what's the address, James? Ari Canal.
Well, there's, there's, there's a couple of them, that's why, One North Road, and then there's Five North Road.
Okay.
The email correspondence going back and forth has been under Five North Road, I don't know if that helps you or not, but that's.
Oh, okay, let me see, it's, I got an application, I got a permit number, so that'll work better.
Yeah, it's not coming up under Five North Road, James?
Yeah, I'm gonna put the permit number in. That's helpful. All right, here we go. Let's see, hold on. Yeah, expiration date is May 29th, 2019.
So that works fine, because we have May 15th work session, and then a May 20th regular meeting.
Yeah, so you, it'll, it'll, you have plenty of time.
Okay.
Very good.
You've done what you were supposed to do.
Sure, that's on the agenda. Perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're on record now.
Great.
There's no free to sign it.
Sign it.
I flew that you were here.
Although you're on TV.
I was gonna say.
Everybody knows.
Yeah, smile.
I, you guys all have a packet that I had, I had provided to the board, I attended another one of the dredging sessions with Suffolk County legislator Al Kupsky and presiding officer Dwayne, Dwayne Gregory?
Yes.
Along with other, along with a lot of others.
Bill, this one.
This one here.
Oh, I got it.
So I just wanted to get the board up to speed on where we're at, I mean, obviously, you know, we rely heavily on Suffolk County, working closely with Suffolk County dredge. You gotta.
You got it?
Yeah, it's right. We rely heavily with, you know, coordinating and working with the Suffolk County Department of Public Works on, you know, various dredging projects, and they're, they're difficult to get done as, you know, as you're aware, with weather breakdowns and other mobilization issues, and dredging is very important to navigation, safety, the environment, commerce of our town. There've been changes that have been brought upon, that have further squeezed and put more pressure on the availability of the dredging, two things, red knot bird migration and winter flounder spawning, and there's been a, an ongoing collaboration of all the agencies and different elected boards to try and get the maximum out, so we had another session, yes, on Monday, we had another, another session, and we are still continuing to, to get data on, on the birds, and trying to look at these projects that are going to be occurring in certain areas throughout the county, that maybe they can do an analysis of, to see if there are some of them that we could start on, that they could start on, perhaps in September, and to try and get the maximum amount of dredge time available. They're also looking at purchasing other types of equipment, like long stick explorators, where maybe in some small areas, it would be less invasive to do things mechanically versus hydraulically. So there hasn't been any definitive decisions that have been made, because it's still in the research phase, but obviously, with dredge window times, time is of the essence, so all the different agencies are kind of looking at these things, and they're trying to see what it is they can do to get everyone on the same page. So what I did was I, I made a photocopy of everything that, that I had, so that you could all be up to speed on the same information that I have, okay? Thank you.
I got a question, on North Sea, it said springtime, spring dredging for 2018, is there any chance to get in a spring 2019, because I already got a few calls, and I had a couple ladies stop me, the people are concerned about whether, that a channel moves so close where they swim, the boats come close to the beach, and ended with the swimmers, then the, I had a couple boaters went out over the weekend, and they bumped, and they, they're afraid that they're gonna run into swimmers in the springtime.
D P W is, is well aware of these, you know, these issues that we have.
Yeah.
The board has articulated, I mean, James is working on formulating the current priority dredge list?
Yeah, so I, going on off that, I actually need, I haven't heard from any of you, other than Bill today, about North Sea, I will put that on there. Please tell me which ones you need on that list?
Right.
Yeah.
So I can put it on there.
Articulate that over to, to James, he'll formulate that list, send it over to Scott Hillary.
You have the other, you have the other two for me, too.
Which ones?
Sabonic, and you have Cold Spring.
And you got Royal, Royal Sylvan, you got all the canals over there, Long Neck Canals as well, that are always on a priority dredge list. Fresh Pond.
You have Fresh Pond.
Yep.
So like I explained back in February, they're not gonna accept ones that don't have permits and stuff like that, and haven't been dredged by them in the past?
I think those will have permits and have been.
Do we have iron out that one up in Noack? Fisher Wildlife?
I don't, I don't.
With the birds?
At Morton?
Morton.
Near Clam Island.
That's gonna hurt somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you, it's, dredging is not an easy task, I mean. You can't just cast aside the Federal Endangered Species Act, they, they're very, very sensitive on how these things are getting done. Buy the list, take a look at last year's list, take a look at the eighteen list compared to this list that you have here, circulate it throughout the entire board, and then once everybody kind of gives the nod on it, send it straight over to Scott Hillary.
Well, I need to get that over as soon as possible, so.
Need it as soon as possible, and in addition, there's other.
I'm gonna put the ones that weren't dredged last year on there and send it to them.
Exactly.
Including North Sea, because that is the only one that I've gotten complaints for.
And he's gonna do the, they're gonna do the best they possibly can, because it's, it's not easy, they're only gonna get certain dredge window times.
Yeah, and hopefully, we might be able to get North Sea dredged this springtime, if we get enough.
Well, what would, what will help is, what's gonna happen is, when they get their priority, they've got this list that I'm showing you here, the big list, it's gonna boil down from all of the towns, and then what's gonna happen is, the different agencies are gonna take a look at the individual projects, and they're gonna make a determination on things such as how much turbidity is gonna be caused, and, and what that turbidity is gonna do to surrounding submerged aquatic vegetation, you know, are there red knot birds that are gonna stop over in this particular area, are there plovers in a certain area? So they're gonna take a look at different things, and they're gonna try and make a roadmap that's gonna make the best, so that the county can do the most efficient and effective job, and navigate all of the obstacles that are, you know, presented, based on all the laws that you have to follow when you're engaging in this activity. You know, obviously, you know, this activity, it's, it's getting pumped not to an upland site, generally, it's going onto a shoreline area, which makes it even more difficult if you, you know, when it comes to the birds, as opposed to getting it, you know, where you're digging a deep channel, and pumping it to an area where you don't have these colonial birds that are foraging and nesting. That's not the case in many of these projects. So we'll boil this down, they're gonna do the best they can to try and squeeze the most out of the window.
And we'll get any, we'll discuss with you pronto.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wanna get it out tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah, and then, and at the end of the day, they're gonna have to do what they've gotta do, I mean, the county is gonna do what they can do on the logistical end. I kind of showed you this matrix here, you guys have the matrix of what the concern is at what point in time, okay? And, and you'll see, you know, in the dark area, you'll see what the indication is, discuss opportunities to open dredge window and/or window relief waivers. That's gonna be like, it sounds to me, on a project basis, dependent upon what the specific site conditions are in that area, and then mapping out what makes the most sense from a mobilization standpoint, okay? And everybody does understand that time is of the essence, so you're up to speed, and there's a lot that we all don't know, because the folks that do the analysis on, on the birds and on the aquatic vegetation, they're still doing their analysis of the sites, so this is gonna take some time, but yet, there's not a lot of time. I think you're gonna see a lot of activity in June, in terms of the back and forth and decision-making, in terms of what they're able to do, but it's, it's a task that was never easy, and it's just gotten a lot harder, okay? So you're up to speed, okay?
This one in Noack I brought up, though, was it ever ironed out?
With the bulkhead, is that, is that the one?
No, 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 that's, that's no, David, this one here, Fisher Wildlife said it was their bottom, their sand, they want the sand on their beach, but they won't allow a machine on the beach to, to smooth it out.
Oh, you can't get to, you can't get the machine there, that's the trouble.
Right, a hundred percent, but it's our, our sand, our bottom.
Yeah.
We should put it where we want to put it, and Clam Island's a big island.
Right, well, yeah, this is, this is.
More in, Wildlife Sanctuary, you're talking about.
Right, right.
This, this is more getting into the heart of, okay, all well and good, but you have to account for this bird, and this bird, and this vegetation, and try and figure out how you're gonna, how you're gonna navigate this matrix, how you're gonna navigate this matrix and get this all done at the same time, that's what everybody's trying to figure out.
I asked, we started this, when the complaints were coming in last year, because the guys can't get in and out, you can't get two boats side by side, you can barely get one boat, and it's getting worse by the day.
All you could do is put it on the priority dredge list, indicate the issues, indicate the level of public.
Requests.
Request, and, and public, you know, there's gotta be a major public benefit to it, because they're gonna score it, they're gonna look at that, and then they're gonna take a look at the matrix, and they're gonna look at, at all this list of like eighty projects throughout the county, okay? And then they're gonna figure out what's gonna make sense, what they can get to, and what they can't get to, you know, they're, they're working on getting a couple of more guys to keep things running, they're working on getting more equipment, so that, you know, perhaps you can get more things done, and then at the end of the day, they're working on trying to navigate that maze of requirements from all the regulatory authorities that don't just say, yeah, go ahead, don't worry about it, it's just, that's not in their nature, it doesn't work that way. Okay? I've been through several sets of these, and it, and I, you know, I've given you guys exactly everything, so you can sit and read and look at the same stuff that's going on.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Before, oops.
Go ahead, I know we gotta go to.
Just before we do that, maybe James just, James Durye and Scott Burwitz and myself attended the water quality funding meeting, and we put forth, James did a lot of work and put forth a habitat restor, aquatic habitat restoration plan for SAG pond that includes multiple things, James, maybe you want to talk about it a little bit?
Well, it's just a proposal for the plan, they had us change the application to do a Sagaponic pond habitat restoration plan, and apply for that through C P F. So we submitted everything on, as, you know, to the deadline, and I believe they have a work session tomorrow.
Yes, so. So it gets presented.
On the town board level?
Yes.
Yes, it's, it, there's a work session tomorrow for the town board, it gets presented tomorrow, and then with all the other projects, so.
And as well as the Meacock's additional sensors as well, but didn't have much problems like that.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, it was, it was a great meeting, I thought, and hopefully, they, they accept the Sagaponic plan, because I think that could be a really good plan for everybody.
Yeah, it's, it's a very comprehensive, holistic one, so we hope that it will be favorably looked upon.
Thanks for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
You did good, Sam, you did good stuff. You're welcome.
Oh, we're going to executive session.
You ready?
No, I got a few things.
You guys get some.
You can pass these down, this is the information for the porta potties, we want to get one, I don't know, two years ago for Hampton Bay's, there it is, I'd like to get them a potty ASAP, so they have their own bathroom at least at the maintenance shop. I think if I looked it correctly, it looked like the cost was like sixty a month, and they clean it twice a week. While you're looking at that, Martha, I think we should send a letter to Adam Miller Group requesting plans for West Water Street, Davis's old building, which they're gonna put a dock in, which you and I discussed, I've left numerous messages and they've got nowhere.
Can you just build them at West Water Street, where?
Sag Harbor, in the Village. It's right near the bridge.
All right, perhaps you can?
Yep.
Give me a little more information, and we'll sit down and talk about it.
When we were on Noack Path Saturday, the guys came in to pump some water, clean some mud, and open up some drains, we saw a bunch of white lines on the road. Well, I went there yesterday, and there's a brand-new electrical service underneath the road going to this property, eleven sixty-seven Noack Path, with no permit. So I called the building department, and they never called me back.
Is that one, Bruce, that maybe we did a letter of permission for, maybe, I thought that we had something on Noack Path?
I think that was in a different area.
It was in a different area, do you want me to look that up for you?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Also, they had a complaint about some mulch on Middle Line Highway, and off a brick joint, and it turns out not to be ours. I think it's, that's the town's, but the gentleman moved the mulch, so there's no real big thing. However, though, in doing that, Middle Line Highway, I found another road that we own, it's a short road, maybe quarter mile long, one zero zero eight, Middle Line Highway, right next to the phone company on the turnpike. At the end of that road, there's one house. Did you ever know that was ours?
It's shown in land manager as a trusty road.
Yeah, well, I don't know how far back it goes, and how deep it goes, but.
It's a dirt road, right?
Well, he's put some stones down there. The house was built in ninety-one, so I don't know if there's any type of documentation he's provided, or vice versa.
I haven't been able to conduct the research on whether or not there was ever a road review or anything, but, um.
So that is, um, I know the guy who owns that house.
...difficulties with Minutetrack, so...
Trying to see him, but I can't place his name.
Yeah, his house is right behind the phone company.
Yeah, it's like a Cape Cod style.
It's a nice-sized house.
Yeah.
I was really surprised, because I've lived in the village all my life, I never went back to that road, and then it just come by the wayside, and I drove down it, and there's a house.
Yeah, I think we actually, a bunch of the trustees, years ago, we went, we visit almost every road, and we were with Tim McColl.
That's it?
That's all you got?
Yeah, that's enough.
Wait.
Oh, we got more stuff.
Sorry, one more thing. Rogers Lane, West Hampton, Remsenberg. In January, President Warner and I met with residents of that area, because there'd been some, um, difficulty with the duck blind at the end of that road. Following that meeting, one of the things that we discussed was that the duck blind would be removed for the summer. And, um, I spoke with Bay Constable Franks, he spoke with the blind owner, and I checked the other day, and the blind is gone. So hopefully, the residents in the Rogers Lane area will be happy with that result. So I just wanna thank Bay Constable Franks for...
Did a good job. He's actually working on a project right now to have, on off-season, have the lines either be moved out of the water or moved to a designated area, which are a big, big help.
Yes.
Did you, uh, what's the update on, are we gonna have a public hearing on the lease for the yacht club? Because Scott may be thinking of it when he brought it up.
I, a draft has been sent to the yacht club. I have not heard from them, whether or not they accept the draft the way it was... Excuse me, is this the Shinnecock Yacht Club? Um, right, is this the Shinnecock? It came back, they signed it.
Oh.
A lease? They signed a lease?
It's a license agreement, correct? It's a license agreement. Yes, it's signed, it's on Ed's chair, waiting for a counter signature. Uh, I thought that the board was going to give comments, a draft copy was sent to them after the last meeting where it was discussed, for the board to comment.
Brought up that we should go to a public hearing on that, about the rent and all that kinda stuff.
I don't recall that.
There's a lot going on. I, I know we had a lot of discussion, but I'd have to review the minutes myself on that.
Yeah, I think you brought that up.
I may have suggested it, but I don't know if the board acted on it.
Well, the copies are in the office, they've been signed by the other... Okay, well, so if the board wants to schedule a public hearing on it, then we can, we can do that.
Yeah, because make sure...
There's no legal requirement for the trustees to schedule a public hearing for it, but if that's...
Make sure the, the, the rent is fair for, you know?
Yeah, I, I remember we suggested it, I don't know if we passed a resolution.
No, we did not, we were gonna look into it.
But we could, it's not signed on our side here.
No, it's not. It's sitting on, it's sitting in.
So prior to our president signing, uh, an agreement, if the board feels so inclined.
Well, you have to make sure he doesn't, doesn't go there and sign it.
Well...
I'll take it off. There's no resolution authorizing him to sign it.
Right, so then we could, we could, somebody...
Because we don't wanna get another project, another problem.
Then we, we can, at the general meeting, we could set a date to schedule a public hearing.
I would have to prepare a resolution by Friday for it.
Is that the direction that we wanna go? Yes, so, probably should.
Okay, so I'll gather up the, do you want the actual documents, Martha? Uh, you can move on to them, I don't, I don't need them. Okay. To prepare the resolution for the nearest public hearing.
Is time of the essence with this, so that, are you, do you have enough time to do it, Martha?
I don't have enough time, but I'll get it done.
Would it be possible to wait until the next work session, rather than trying to...
I don't think that's advisable to wait, because I, I think that the agreement is, time is of, not, I don't, so time of the essence is a legal term, so I'm not gonna use that here.
Okay.
But it is timely in the sense that the current...
It's summer.
Agreement is expiring.
Okay.
Um, so I wouldn't want there to be again.
So can you get it done by Friday? Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Sorry for that.
Thank you so much.
I wanna ask you about Scott Hager.
Okay.
Motion to close?
We'll motion to close and go into executive session for the purposes of negotiation and litigation.
Second.
Well, uh, for the purposes of litigation...
Litigation.
...and to receive confidential legal advice from your attorney regarding the...
Negotiations.
The legislation.
Legislation, right, I'm sorry, yes.
Hold the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so...
Okay.
Motion.
Got it.
We're adjourned.